Like to call a meeting Monday, March 18th, 2019, regular council meeting to order. Approval of the agenda? Counsel Norbury?
That District of Tumbler Ridge Regular Council Meeting Agenda for Monday, March 18th, 2019 be adopted as presented.
Counsel Majewski? All favor? Adoption minutes, 3.1, March 4th, 2019 Budget Meeting Minutes, recommendation? Counsel Majewski?
As presented.
Counsel How? Any business arising for the minutes? Oh, all favor? Any business arising for the minutes? CNN, Petitions and Delegations, 5.1, the Lions Club, they won't be attending tonight. Mr. Wall just informed me just before the meeting that they were still waiting on some information to report to council, so they'll rebook that through staff. Correspondents, 6.1. Counsel How?
How much time do we have left for them to be able to present as a delegation, us to formulate an opinion, and then to get it on to budget? How much time do we have left?
I think it's May 10th is the deadline. Mr. Wall?
Today would be the date, because we need to get our budget file already and do three readings. We're already looking at an extra, possibly an extra meeting to get the budget passed, because that first meeting in May is NCLGA, so there is no council meeting during that time. So we're looking already at having an extra meeting. Now, if council was to receive it on the first, you'd have to make your decision during the same meeting, so you'd have to receive it and make your decision during that meeting. Now, that's not to say you couldn't do a budget amendment, you're at it outside the budget, but to fit it into your budget process, you wouldn't need it to happen today.
Counsel Norbury?
Or we could add another special budget meeting if we feel that the information they provide warrants us adding this grant made to our budget.
Yeah, I think that would be up to the mayor unless a council sends an email. Counsel How?
Yeah, and that's my concern with it. We've spent a considerable amount of time to try to listen to this project and get more information on it, and it just keeps to be a recurring thing, and to me, I think we should tell them to shelve the project till they get full information and wait to come to us till next year.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll put that motion on the floor, that we contact the Lions and tell them to bring the budget discussion for this particular part of their application till next year.
Second, Counsel Lehman, any discussion?
Just like clarification, is that all three sections, the two aboriginal sections plus the cabinet?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Hosted? Correspondents, Dr. Charles Halm, free use request, sorry, correspondence from Dr. Charles Halm dated March 11th, 2019, requesting a fee use, a free use of the conference center on June 1st and 2nd, 2019, for the 3D conference. Recommendation? Counsel Norbury?
For discussion?
Okay. Second. Counsel Majewski? All favor? Counsel Norbury?
Yeah, so I believe that we already had planned to allow Dr. Halm to host the 3D conference. I think this year, they're having a focus on diabetes, and they have a lot of really predominant speakers coming into town. I think it's a great opportunity for Tumbler Ridge to keep hosting this event. I think this is the third year they've done it, so I would be in favor of letting them have the conference center as a part of our free uses for the two days mentioned.
Just got a question, Mr. Wall, first. Do you know how many days we have left that I apologize, because I know it came up during Martin Hocke that I wasn't in the room?
Right now, all of the free days are accounted for, but two of the three days remaining are planned for distributions in the coal conference. So council could, if you wanted, give those free uses on the coal conference to this 3D, and then the district would pay 50%, because we can use it for our uses, our use for 50%. We have five uses for district uses at half price, so then we could use the coal conference at half price. So that's council's options, to pay half price for the coal conference and give these for free, or to require the 3D conference to pay full price.
Counsel Majewski?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Kakaka. The only concern I have is both the parties, like even if it was for the coal conference or for the doctors, they're both quite wealthy parties that are going to be attending this, and they're going to be burning up a lot of our free uses if we're already capped up. So even if they can do them at the half the rate, I was more for that, but to give them a free one, I don't think that's necessary, just because of the nature of who they are. And they are traveling here, so to divide it up between all of them, it's probably not going to be a whole lot of extra expense for them, especially when it's 250 or 500 dollars or whatever it is, it's not a whole lot, so.
Counsel How?
Yeah, I think it has a little bit to do of, you know, what do we as a district want to be seen as supporting, regardless of what the amount is? What do you want to be seen as supporting? So, you know, we have made health our number one priority for this council. I think this is headed in the right direction. It's along that theme, and I agree with you in the fact that, you know, the coal companies that are coming to the Energy and Natural Resources, or Energy Forum, can likely handle that. I mean, one of the companies that owns the Trend Center is a coal mining company, so it almost makes more sense for us to go, in my mind, go towards this doctors' conference, because that's in line with what our strategic priority is, and with the coal conference, perhaps, you know, go away from that. But if we've already made a commitment to do the coal conference there already, it'd be kind of hard to go back on that commitment now. I don't know if that's the case, but if we've already made that commitment, that's not the right way to do it either, so, yeah. Do we have any information if we've made that commitment to the coal conference yet?
Mr. Wall?
The coal conference is hosted by the district, so it's just a commitment to yourself. If council wants to move towards paying for that, we would just increase what we figure we'll have to pay for that conference.
Any more discussion? Does anybody want to make a motion? Counsel Norbury?
I'll make a motion that we, I can't figure out how to phrase this, that we take on the, we allow the, geez, before I came in, the district to use two of our free passes to the Trend Mountain Conference Center for the 3D Drugs, Dinos, and Diner, Tumbler Ridge Medical Conference, for the dates of June 1st and 2nd, 2019.
Second, Counsel Lehman, any more discussion? Counsel How?
So just for clarification, what is the actual rule that we have within our bylaw for the correspondence, petitions, and delegations? If something is heard the first time, we're not supposed to vote on it the first time? Is that, does that, is that in correspondence, or is that only in petitions and delegations?
No, and I think you could be right, and I might have been pushing that.
And is this considered the first time that we heard it? Because I agree, Chris said we have talked about this before, but...
And I guess that I might have been just pushing for a recommendation that could have came up the next meeting, so, Mr. Wall?
So for petitions and delegations, it really comes down to how council wants to interpret the rules and the rules of the chair, so what the, let me lay out the two extremes of where you can go. You can have, and there are councils that goes to the extremes, that you can only deal with the recommendations that are in the agenda, and that's it. Even if you want to make an amendment, you're going to have to come into the next meeting in order to do that. So there's councils that go to that extreme, there's councils that go to the extreme that pretty much anything can come on the floor at any time. This council has operated that petitions and delegations come under the idea that this needs to be first heard and deferred, because you don't know what the question is going to be. But correspondence generally is something that you're able to read and understand what's being requested of you. So on this one, my advice to council would be, I think it was pretty clear what was being requested of you when you came into this meeting, so if you're feeling comfortable to move forward, I would say that that's probably a motion that's inbound, but again, that would be up to the chair. The chair can say, no, this is, what we're being asked to decide here wasn't clear, we didn't have time to prepare, I'm going to rule that motion out of order, so it really comes down to your decision.
Okay. And I do apologize, Counsel Riley, I thought it would have after I'd asked for the recommendation thinking that maybe we could have pushed it. Counsel How?
Yeah, and just, so for clarification, it's in our bylaw, it's Section 22(c), the one we're reviewing tonight, actually, and it says, "Council shall not act on a request to consider submission made at a delegation or a petition," but it does not say correspondence. So, you know, I guess by our bylaw, it's okay. I just wanted to confirm that if it's in correspondence, it's okay, but to petitions and delegations, we should not be doing that, so.
Yeah.
And we have, we've done that, but I don't like voting on those ones, so.
Yeah, and I don't agree or disagree with you when it comes to petitions and delegations or those. Correspondence, when I read it, it's kind of clear what they were looking for, and I mean, just the flavor of council they're talking about. I mean, you spoke up to say how it is something that we've pushed for on this council for this year is his house and it means it, so. Any more discussion, motion on the floor? All in favor? 6.2, Building Healthy Communities Committee, Imagine BC Grant Letter of Support. Email correspondence from Counsel Norbury with a request from the Building Healthy Communities Committee for a letter of support for their Imagine BC grant. Recommendation? Counsel Lehman?
For information.
There's actually a recommendation up there.
Okay. That council provides a letter of support for the Building Healthy Communities Committee in support of their grant application to Imagine BC.
Second, Counsel Norbury? Second it?
Yes.
Counsel Norbury? Discussion? Counsel Norbury?
Hang on, I just decided to keep my hand up there so I can provide some information. So, yeah, this is, Dr. Halm and Angelo Robertson, with the help of our coordinator, has come up with a grant for the Northern Development Initiative Fund, no, sorry, for the Imagine BC grant, and what they're doing is they're finishing off the outside of the health center, thank you, so how two sides of the building have those nice pictures on the front. This is a grant for $5,000 to finish off the rest of the building. Because, because of the short timeframe, this was something simple, and it was almost a replication of a previous grant that's been applied for, the Building Healthy Communities Committee has talked about the next one that's coming up in six months to look at something more in the community, but because of the short timeframe, we only met again in March, that this is what we're going to go with, because it's measurable, it's attainable, it's something to beautify our town. Yeah, so, and this letter of support isn't needed for the grant application, but it will help their cause to get it first.
Okay. Any more? Counsel Majewski?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Kakaka. Thank you for bringing that up, because I was unaware what the grant was actually for, and I would have probably declared a conflict of interest there if I would have known, because I was asked about the signage for the windows, so just to clarify that, I wasn't aware that it was for the windows and the design aspect of it.
My understanding, Mr. Wall, if you understand what it's for, you can probably declare it out. Mr. Wall, take it, declare it out so you're not part of the vote. If you wish.
I should probably step out just in case, just to be safe.
Yes, and that's my apologies, because I think I knew what it was for, and not because I read anything anywhere, it's just that we've done that before when I was on the same committee, so when that comes forward, I guess just to Mr. Wall first, when that comes forward, do we not ever add what they're looking for the grant for, when it comes from some of these committees? Mr. Wall?
I wasn't aware this was just coming from Counsel Norbury, who put it on the agenda.
Thank you. Counsel Norbury?
And my apologies, I mean, moving forward in the future, I'll make sure to send out, we just finished up the draft earlier this week, and it was a bit of a short timeline, but I'd be happy in the future to send out a copy of both grants, so everyone has information. I got it this, the final copy this afternoon, so I was concerned about the rushed timeline if people saw it, and I figured I'd just speak to it tonight to add clarification.
Okay. Does any more discussion, motion on the floor? All in favor? Carry. Counsel Norbury? Please. Bylaws, 7.1, Council Procedure Bylaw Number 675, 2019. Final adoption of Council Procedure Bylaw Number 675, 2019. Recommendation? Counsel Majewski?
That council adopts the Council Procedure Bylaw Number 675, 2019.
Second, Counsel Norbury? Discussion? Counsel How?
Still not in favor of changing our PNP to call in a Strategic Planning Committee meeting. I think our PNP meetings are critical to the discussion points, gives us open platform to have open and frank conversations. I'm concerned that we change this to a Strategic Planning Committee meeting, that we are losing that ability to have that type of debate, and I think our strategic priorities are things that we are supposed to set early in our term and keep an update on quarterly, not be discussing it month to month. So I think the point of this has been missed, but I'll be voting against it again, because I don't feel that that's being heard yet, so.
Counsel Norbury?
I'll speak to that a little bit, and it really comes down to why we're meeting in a committee of the whole, so like when we're all sitting down, we're at a meeting where we're all having discussions, we're not making any decision points, we're just passing them forward, and I think the idea, and this was recommended by that leadership team, Caleb and Christina Bentley came in, and they pointed out that committees of the whole shouldn't just be a, they should be appointed focused group, and I like the idea of our strategic priorities. Now, I do like the conversation that we get going at these meetings, and I don't see that change in the name of something will change it that much, but I think, as we're forming in the committee of the whole, we should have a pointed focus in what we're doing, rather than just, let's push something off until a PNP, talk about it some more, and we can just put it off at the council meeting, say we want to talk about it some more. But, yeah.
So I actually have one question, I mean, I meant to ask Mr. Wall when I was in this morning if you're onto. If we were changing it to the Strategic Planning Meeting instead of the PNP, when we get in discussions and motions, will that not be the same thing, we'll be motioning it to go on the next meeting, or council? So that's not going to change? So it's still, it's going to be around the same as a PNP in regards to, that's why I asked Mr. Wall, I meant to ask him some more to highlight it, so even at Strategic Planning Meeting, it's the same thing, right? You're going to take whatever you talk about there and move it to the next meeting, and you're aware of that? Okay. Counsel Norbury?
Yeah, absolutely, it's really just a name change, but it's just the symbolic name change of being focused more.
Okay. Any more discussion? Counsel How?
So for instance, when we wanted to talk about snow clearing in Tumbler Ridge, we used the opportunity at a PNP meeting to have open discussion, throw ideas around, get flavor from staff, members, not just our CAO. It's a more open meeting to be able to talk about something that was not our strategic priority to worry about, snow clearing. We thought we had fantastic snow clearing up until the period of time where we had staffing issues and other issues that, and weather issues, that made it come to the forefront, where we decided now we want to talk about something, but that was not a strategic priority, and that to me is what's being lost here, is that the strategic priorities are not what's being focused on in a strategic priority meeting. We're focusing on topics that should be for a PNP meeting. So my thought process when we originally talked to the mayor about this, is that we needed to have, just like in previous councils, a strategic plan meeting where we got the direction of which way this council wanted to go. I fear that that meeting is not taking place, and we are changing on the fly by having this strategic priority meeting on a monthly basis, rather than a PNP meeting. That's my fear, is that we are not steering the ship in one direction, we're making direction changes as we go, and that analogy's been used by Mr. Wall numerous times in here when we set our budget. We set our budget to steer the course of the ship, we don't make changes as we go through the year. You set it at one point, that's your strategic priority, you go through it. I think the strategic priorities could have been dealt with in one or two, or possibly three meetings, in the beginning of every year, in January and February, and set the course, but that's my feeling on it, that the actual priority that we're looking at is being lost, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? So I'll speak a bit to, I actually feel the same way as Counsel How in regards to that, and my thoughts are the same thing, strategic planning is how you set what your wants are for that year within your budget. So whether it's paving, adding sidewalk, which we've added into the budget, that'd be strategic plans, given direction of what you want staff to work towards, and if we do that in the middle, I think we're going to give direction, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, maybe the strategic planning meeting is going to be the same thing, we can talk about snow removal and all that. I talked to Mayor Bertrand, and I kind of asked him about that, and that's kind of what he said to me, too, is his thoughts are, would be, you know, you could talk about snow removal, then that's not actually an strategic plan at the back of our books, so that's why I won't go in favor. I mean, I think, you know, unless I get clarification from Mr. Wall, but my understanding of strategic planning would be for whatever our strategic plan is, not other items, whether it's policies that we're going to want, trying to build and have staff work on, bring it back to us. Mr. Wall?
Counsel's getting into a very philosophical argument, and where you want to go and what you want to call your meetings is up to you, but I would say that you could look at your strategic plan as basically, and this is the way that I think we have operated for the past number of years, is the strategic plan is those items within the district for which council wants to have input in, control over, and monitoring of, and that's how we've built our strategic plan. So we've got the strategic plan at the back of this agenda, which will be updated when the new budget is passed, that has within each department, again, those items which council wants to monitor, wants to change, and wants to have input into. So if that's the view at which you see the strategic plan, I really don't see council talking about two different items here, that the issues, if it comes up to the level of council, that there needs to be input and change made, then it's a strategic priority of council. So I believe that's where Mayor Bertrand's going, I hesitate to speak on his behalf when he's not here, but I think it goes to that, if that's what you want your strategic plan to be, is encompassing that, then there's not going to be any difference, but council may need to have a discussion over what do you want your strategic plan to be, and council's had this discussion before you. Council has changed between the type of strategic plan that had one, two, three, maybe four items max on it, and those were overall directions. When that was there, council felt that there wasn't any reporting coming back to you, and you didn't know what was actually going on, so the strategic plan grew, and then you've seen, well, with the strategic plan growing up this big, are we not focused enough on those few key items? And that's the trouble with your, that's the trouble with setting the strategic plan. Do you want to be involved and have input on the larger scale service delivery within the community, or do you want to only be focused on two to three main goals, and where do you want that to be? So right now, our strategic plan is larger, rather than smaller, and it's up to council whether you want it to continue to be that size.
Thank you. Counsel Norbury?
Yeah, I mean, we're not changing any procedural bylaws or what can be talked about, it's a name change, and it's more of a symbolic name change in where we're, discussion points are going, and if we look at our strategic plan timeline, we're talking about golf course boundary issues, the repairs, I mean, we're not talking massive conceptual things, we're talking about hands-on, you know, day-to-day dealings that we need to deal with, and we're not changing our bylaws, we're just changing the name, and, you know, it's, I don't see the...
Any more discussion? Counsel How?
I would challenge the other counselors, what are our priorities for this term? What are our priorities for this term? That's what I would ask of council right now. What do you see as our priorities for this term? Have we had that discussion?
Counsel Lehman? Thank you, Acting Mayor Kakaka. I said at the beginning that it was health, and it still is, I think that's one of our major issues. I'm not overly concerned about a lot of these other things, but healthcare is on top, so...
Counsel Majewski?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Kakaka. A lot of our strategic plans and priorities that we come up with change, and they should have an end date, so they're not going to be ongoing, and they shouldn't be, like, if we have a conversation, which was a former PNP meeting, and it gets brought back to council, a decision should be made, because it's given us time to review it, figure out what we'd like to vote on as an individual, then come together and work on that, and see and see other people's points, but the PNP, the former PNP process was just as brainstorming, and to see what inaccuracies were missed, or is the chance is tapped, so changing the name, I don't think technically is going to affect how we've done things in the PNP's previously with the new strategic planning, what we're going to try to change it to. From what I've seen and with the recommendation, it's just a name change, and a lot of the things that we've discussed and done with in the past, and in previous councils, is going to be the same thing going forward, like I don't see there's huge major change.
The latest one thing, then why do the name change? If we don't think anything's going to change in regards to the concept or how that meeting is ran, this, I mean, I just heard from Mr. Wall that the same thing will happen, if there was something talked about as a strategic planning meeting, it starts to be brought forward to a regular council, so then why name change? Counsel Majewski?
From what I've understood, is when Mayor Bertrand, he just wanted to do a refresh, because it seemed like people were just stuck in the policies and priorities of just brainstorming, but then there was no end goal, there was no finished top line, there was nothing to get completed, it was just talked about, but nothing actually got done, so this way, there should be an actual end goal, and I think that's what he was trying to, why the reason that he wanted to do a change up and refresh what it was called.
Counsel How?
So what I see, or what I hear around the table, is that a PNP meeting is the same as a strategic priority meeting, we can do the same things in both meetings, the difference is, is we no longer have a strategic priority meeting, that's what I'm saying, we're having a strategic priority meeting every month now, rather than at the beginning of the year and coming up with our major priorities. Like I say to council, what is our major priorities this year? Yes, we've talked about health, but that's on the scale when we talk about three or four major issues, that's one of them, but that is the only one that I can think of that we've all agreed on, that is our strategic, or our main priority going ahead this year. Yes, there's all kinds of smaller things in the strategic plan timeline, but something that is a focus of this council has been health, what else? What else is, and that is the whole point of having that meeting, which we've never had with council, with Mayor Bertrand. Mayor Bertrand said to us, if you have any major plans or strategic plans that you want done, put it in an email and send it to Mr. Wall. That's how we did it, but that was not a discussion point, you know, if you think the main thing is fixing the curling club, you know, and I don't, we haven't had that discussion to say, is all of council in agreement that we're going to focus on the curling club? That's the portion that is being missed by not having a strategic planning meeting in the beginning of the year. I don't know, hopefully that makes sense, but I think, I understand where you guys are coming, saying the meetings are the same, but we're missing the strategic planning portion of it.
Counsel Norbury?
Yeah, and I mean, that's, I agree with you, Counsel How, that we do, I think we should sit down and have a discussion, and really prioritize what our strategies moving forward are, because it's a good idea to not lose focus, and it's really easy to lose track of the larger objectives when we are as busy as we are, but that's, you know, that's, I think, a separate issue, and we should be discussing, are we really trying to put off a council procedure bylaw because we don't like a name change? Nothing has changed, we're just changing the name in this policies and priority meeting. Are we really, are we willing to put this off again, just because we don't like a name? The meetings are the same, we're doing a symbolic change, and I absolutely agree that we should sit down and have a separate meeting on a strategic plan, but when we're talking that we need a strategic plan, and Counsel How, you're hitting back at that, what is our strategic plan, what is our strategic plan, and I think this symbolic change is to go to that and say, hey, we need to be focused in our discussions, and how do all these policies, how do all of these procedures affect our larger strategic plan moving forward? And that's what I like about the symbolic change, is that will this change A or B affect the bottom line and what we're trying to do as a whole? That's why I like this symbolic.
Any more discussion? Okay, call a question, all in favor? Opposed? Defeated? Not sure how everybody feels here. I mean, I know this was Mayor Bertrand brought this forward. Mr. Wall, if you can just assist me on this, do we leave this to the next meeting, maybe? In regards to giving direction back to staff to, I know it has to be council direction and input, but in regards if we're going to change the name back to, to leave it the way it was?
So right now, the old version of the council procedure bylaw is in place. There were other changes to the council procedure bylaw, so what I'm going to do is I'll speak with Mayor Bertrand, we'll take a look at this, and I'll bring it back if we want to go through those changes. We will have to go through another public notification period, council, or changes to the council procedure bylaw require notification in the newspaper. And since this has been a big enough change, if we are going to make those other changes, we'll have to repost to allow for that public comment period.
New business. Eight point one is approved exempt event, Admin 38. A report from the Acting Director of Community Services and Facilities dated March 18th, 2019, present events be included in the approved exempt events list. Counsel Maginsky?
Counsel approves amendments to the approved exempt events policy, Admin 38, and adopts policy as presented.
Counsel Norbert, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Eight point two, Ridge Rogers Incorporated Airport Land Lease Renewal. A report from the Director of Corporate Services dated March 18th, 2019, present to council airport land lease renewal between the District of Tumbler Ridge and Ridge Rogers Incorporated. Recommendation? Counsel Norbert?
That council authorizes the mayor and council, sorry, the mayor and corporate offers to renew the airport land lease between the District of Tumbler Ridge and Ridge Rogers Inc. for a five-year term, beginning April 1st, 2019, and ending March 31st, 2024, at monthly lease rate of $89 plus GST.
Secondar? Counsel Maginsky? Discussion? Counsel Out?
So last time that this came across as a councillor, I didn't like it then, and I still don't like it now. I think the amount of money that we're asking for a lease, yes, it's comparable to what Chetwin does, but I don't really care what Chetwin does. I think $89 to lease a spot at the airport where they have a building set up, they have office trailers, they have a storage facility, they have fuel tanks, oil tanks, they've got all kinds of stuff out there, and they get to lease that for $89 a month from the District of Tumbler Ridge in a secured area. It's got a fence around it, there's bathroom facilities out there. To me, it's just not enough money. You know, I, I think that that's, I don't know why Chetwin has agreed on whatever theirs is, but theirs is completely different than what, what we have, as far as I'm concerned. I think $89 a month hardly covers the amount that we have to pay our staff to draft up this contract, send it to lawyers to approval, and then, you know, get it put onto a, an agenda, and then sent off to us, and looked at, reviewed, and then have them discuss it and talk over it again. I, I just, at that time, I didn't think it was enough money. We went into discussions about it and, and came back, basically, that's what Chetwin does, so that's what we're going to do. Just for, for my vote, I can't vote for this. This is one of those opportunities here that, you know, I, I just don't think it's enough money.
Counsel Maginsky?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Koka. Counsel How, what would you recommend as a, a different rate opposed to what we are on par with, with Chetwin, since ours is an unmanned area?
I, you know what, I, I don't want to say what I think a rate should be, but it should be comparable to what, you know, renting or leasing space in Tumbler Ridge is worth, regardless if it's at an airport or where it is. And it's, to me, it, it seems like a very low amount. For, for, for me, if I could go out and rent that area out at the, at the airport as well, to store my old cars or, or trucks or whatever out there for that price, that's a pretty good price for that amount of land. I, I just think that we can do better than that.
Counsel Norbert?
Yeah, I, I understand the cost of staff and, and all the, all these things. That's why I'm glad this is coming as a five-year contract. I mean, the, the cheapest that we can do this is to look at something that's similar, well, what are we going to charge them and why? And either we need to ask staff to do that, again, we need to charge more time, or we need to have someone, we need to have something to back us up in our decision. And, you know, I, I think staff found a comparable airport and sounds reasonable.
So I just have one thing, it's up to our budget for, for 2019, and that's when we're going to be doing a, what do we call it? Assessment out there in regards to bathroom fencing, lighting, all that, and at $90 a month. I mean, I mean, right now, we plow the roads, we have a bathroom facility out there that is looking at the district's going to replace. And right now, I believe there's only one tenant out there, or a couple. Two? There's two tenants out there. So I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't have the budget, my papers are over, Counsel Norbert, but I mean, there, there could be a big expense spend out there. I mean, we need an airport, and we have VCMs that flies in here, or stars or, or that, but I mean, when you're looking at $90, how do you, you know, brand new bathroom facility, depends on what they put out there. And new fencing, and I believe they're talking this time, fencing the whole airport, not just the one side of it, is my understanding, just because it's still a thousand in regards to airports. So I think council still look at that too, especially as Counsel Norbert just stated, how it's a five-year lease renewal.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Koka. I tend to agree with Counsel How and yourself. I think that's less than $1,200 a year. I mean, you're paying $800 a month for a house. I mean, I know it's a little bit different, but that's, that's nothing, $1,200 a year? That's pretty low for what they get.
I'm not sure how many, how many councillors have been out there reporting stuff like that. I mean, they have a fairly big building out there, like a, the kind of cabin concept that people meet before they go for their aircraft excursion, or if they've hired them for a personal contract. And then Mr. or Counsel How mentioned in regards to the fuel tanks and all that, so. Counsel Out?
Do they pay any taxes on that as well, on the building and stuff that's out there? Any idea on what the tax bill is out there?
Counsel Maginsky?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Koka. I'm just curious about the liabilities as well, than if we're talking about fuel tanks and if there's security. And even if we do want to have washrooms out there, it says it's unserved, so there's probably no sewer system there or anything, so it's going to have to be a septic system. So even if, if we had to flip the bill for that, then yeah, we're not even, it's not even comparable to cover any costs at that rate, so.
Yeah, there's actually only bathrooms facilities out there.
Are they outhouses?
It's a aquitrailer, so I'm assuming we pump it out.
The district.
Mr. Wall? Yeah, we pump it out.
Yeah, I wonder.
Then if, if we're looking at more of a cost recovery situation here, should, because their renewal is, is coming up April 1st, should we vote this recommendation down, do the one year, and have staff look at a more comprehensive cost recovery model? Because we're, it sounds like the concern of council is that, you know, we want to get some cost recovery in terms of snow removal, infrastructure, repairs, upgrades, whatever, so, you know, what's, what's the thought?
Yeah, and we could do it that way too. We'd have to turn this one down and, and then re-read it. I don't know if you'll ever get cost recovery out there. I mean, it's, there's a fairly hefty expense on the margin in regards, just the snow removal and then keeping the road in shape. And so, and I could be wrong, but I mean, I know that they have to go and plow, I mean, whenever they have an opportunity. It's not the first thing that's under list, I believe it's, secondar, Mr. Wall?
Yeah, just if council wants to go down that road, this can continue. If the lease were to expire, it would just continue at the same rates and the same conditions, so you're, you're not in a big hurry to continue and do that. But this is kind of where things got bogged down last time.
Yeah.
So staff has gone, and we've got the comparable rate with Chetwin. There are other airports that are a little bit more expensive than this, but they're usually manned airports, so you get up to, I think Grand Prairie got up to 220. I think Grand, off the top of my head, I think Grand Prairie got up to 220 per meter squared. We need some sort of metric to where we're going to go, because cost recovery, there is, I mean, you're looking at $30,000, $40,000 a month if we want to talk about cost recovery, right? So there's no way on these two tenants, we're going to get close to cost recovery. So it's if this is too low, and it is comparable on, on the airports and service levels, what's the metric we want to go with? Because this is where we got lost last time, where council said, well, we don't want this staff come up with another number, but we don't have the metric to do that. We need some sort of metric, or council just sets the rate that they feel is appropriate. You don't have to, you don't have to find a metric, you can just say, this is what I feel is fair, and this is what it's going to be moving forward. In other instances, we would go to a competitive pricing model like we do with our other areas, but because there's not a demand, one, to get in the airport, two, there's so much extra area there, any, any competitive process we go to is likely to turn out less than this, because it's not a, there's not a shortage of, of area available. So if we're not going to approve the recommendation here, that's what we need. We need some sort of metric so staff can go and give you what you want, because again, that's what happened last time, we just got stuck in this gear.
And you're right, and I was actually going to bring that forward, I believe. Staff did do quite the, a lighting area, I don't remember what, what Grand Prairie and Dawson Creek was, but I know you guys did contact them as well, so. Counsel Norbert?
You know, just, I know that the information that Mr. Wall is providing isn't, isn't 100% but to get, to give a rough estimation, if Grand Prairie at a manned airport is charging $2.2 per meter squared, we would be charging.
Where do you get that number from? What's that 2.2?
Mr. Wall just gave us that number. That's how, that's what Grand Prairie is charging them, charging.
He's believing, right?
It's not 100%, right? But just to, just to. Sorry. Hypothetically, in a manned airport, charging 2.2 meters per squared, that, then we would be charging Ridge Rogers $131 approximately. So the, the difference is 40 bucks, 40 bucks in a manned airport per month? Yeah, I mean, if, if other councillors feel that $89, $131 is, is too little, then throw a number, you know? And, but with that number, I think we need to be, have a reason. There's a reason presented here. This is what the unmanned airport's charging, so that we're not, we're not telling Ridge Rogers, we're going to get as much money out of you as we can. I mean, here's what other people are charging, this is what we should be charging you. And anything above 131, honestly, I mean, Grand Prairie is a manned airport, we don't have a manned airport, and they're only charged, they would be charged $131 up there.
Counsel Out?
I guess maybe my hesitancy is I don't understand why leasing land at an airport is so cheap as compared to leasing land outside of an airport. Maybe that's the, what I don't get on this. You know, to lease land in Tumbler Ridge or rent land in Tumbler Ridge, you know, you're looking at anywhere between, you know, for lots out in the heavy industrial parks, somewhere around $200 to $2,500 for a 50 by 100 lot out there, to $5,000 to $6,000 for ones that have shops on, to $18,000 to $20,000, the ones that have shop, per month, per month, is what we're talking here. So I don't understand why, because we own this piece and it's out at the airport, why it is so cheap. It just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. Maybe I don't understand how airports work, and maybe that's how it works at all airports, but, you know, what a great spot to, you know, is that, is this available to anybody? Is anybody allowed to go to the airport and rent 744 meters squared for $90 a month? I think there's probably a lot of people that might want to go do that, I would think.
I, I wouldn't know the stipulations, I would imagine there would be kind of, some kind of stipulation with aircrafts or something, I would think. I could be wrong. You know, and, and the thing with Grand Prairie's hypothetical costing, you know, they might also pay different pricing for snow removal, like they might have a, a cost for snow removal of the runways, de-icing your, your fixed wings. I'm not sure, right? There's, if it's a manned airport, it's a lot, to me, it's a lot different, right? I could be wrong. Counsel Maginsky?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Koka. I think it probably has something to do with the service that they're providing for the public, especially with Dawson Creek, Grand Prairie, et cetera. But if you have a private plane on one of these sites, like in Dawson, there's hangers, I guarantee you, they're not getting them for $89. I think that'd be a whole nother ballgame because of the, the costs involved there and insurance and stuff, so. I think it's just what they're providing as a, as a company here, helping expose our, our nature here, helping with oil and gas exploration, if they still do that, and for tourism. So I think it's kind of benefiting them to pay a lower rate, so, but maybe there should be a little bit of a kickback.
Yeah, I don't agree, I don't disagree with you when it comes, when you say about tourism, I mean, that's, you know, why Ridge Rogers has been doing a lot in regards to, to, with the Global Geopark, and I remember this, it was quite the drawdown conversation where send staff back to go find different numbers, and, you know, it was, it came back, and I mean, I think, you know, we can, I mean, it seems like we're always getting around, but we can call for the, call the question, you can turn it down, and if somebody wants to come up with a number, I mean, I prefer if you don't want to see this, send us back to staff for them to do a report, that's the will of council, then so be it, but I just remember seeing it last time, and I don't have the numbers to get to, to address council.
Yeah, I'm, of the, the lease that cities charge their airports, right? Like, maybe, you know, they set their lease rates at this much money, but they do have a, you know, every time we have to come out, we cost this much to clear the runways, or if, or if the, the transportation companies provide their own, you know, like that is something definitely to look at. If we're talking just direct lease rates, this is comparable, so we should, we should be continuing down the line to offer a fair price to Ridge Rogers. But if, if we're, if we're concerned about the added costs of going out there, well, maybe there's the, the.
Maybe this is a typo, but this is part of the reason why I don't like this. Commencing on the effective date of this lease, the leasee agrees to pay the leaser on a monthly basis, $89 a month, due on the first, every month payable, one month in advance. The above rent is based on $1.30, and then in brackets is $1.49 per square meter per annum. 744 meters multiplied by $1.49 per square meter divided by 12 comes to 9238. How do we get 89 instead? Is there any, is that just a calculation error?
I have to.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, I'm not sure where rest council fits, but maybe we should just, everybody hold the way they want, call a question, and against the fee, maybe just send us back to staff, there's some concerns with some of the numbering. All in favor of the recommendation that's on? Opposed? So do you need a recommendation to send back to, to Mr. Wall in regards to the numbers? I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where council sits, if you guys want to set your own price before we ask Mr. Wall that, or if you want to send it back just to make sure the calculations are correct that Counsel How brought up? Mr. Wall?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good idea. There's no point in us going back to bring back these calculations, just to come back and find out, well, that's not what we were going to accept anyway, so if there's a different metric again, that direction would be useful.
Counsel Maginsky?
Thank you, Mayor. 110, I don't think Ridge Rogers and the other, if there is another company out there that's going to scoff at, you know, 20 bucks on top of their monthly lease agreement, so we're going to do something like that.
So if you go to page 59, there's some alternatives I'd do with that.
59? Sets the metrics, number two?
If you're looking to say, you just have to say that council directs registration to produce a lease with a monthly lease amount of $110 plus GST.
Okay, I'd like to put a motion on the floor. If we could, if that council sets the metrics of $110 plus GST per month for the land lease rates at the.
Counsel Maginsky? If I'll help you, that, that council sets the land, or that council sets the lease rate for Ridge Rogers at $110 plus GST per month.
It sounds great.
Secondar? Counsel Leavon? Discussion? Counsel How?
It's still $21 difference. I, I appreciate where you're, what you're trying to do here, Counsel Maginsky, but I think, it still feels low to me. You know, I think the lease amount should be somewhere up in the $400, $500 a month, you know, $300. I, I don't know exactly where to go with it. You know, I, to me, I would be interested to see, you know, what people pay leases at different airports. You know, I just, I can't, I cannot see how that's possible, that you can rent a spot at the airport for less than $100 a month in Dawson or Fort St. John or Grand Prairie, regardless if it's manned or not. Prairie, regardless if it's manned or not. You know, it's still a piece of land where you conduct business, like, that's the way I look at it, so, you know. They're $1,000 an hour, to rent helicopters, $1,000 an hour, right? So...
Plus my understanding out there too, I believe there's only ones that have fuel on site, sell fuel, so whether other aircraft can in, unless they truck in their own fuel on, on cans, is my understanding. There's only ones, Mr. Wall, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they have a contract through the district or something?
Closed. Carry. No vote means in favor?
Correct.
Carry.
8.3, golf course repairs slash service budget increase, a report from the Acting Director of Community Service and Facilities dated March 18th, 2019, taillining the intended use and funds budgeted in the golf, in the community service, funds budgeted in the community service special projects in an amount of $16,000 for the golf course activities. Recommendation, Counselor Maginski?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Koka. That the golf course repairs budget be increased from $16,000 to $50,000 with a focus on tree removal, beautification, and sand trap improvement.
Secondary? Counselor, Counselor Knobier? Discussion? Counselor Howe?
So, maybe I missed something, I'm just trying to grab my... We're going to go from $16,000 to $50,000, and we're gonna focus on removing trees down there. So that means we're gonna do this hazardous tree thing that says we're gonna cut down 1,383 trees to fix the appearance of, or at, at the golf course. Myself, if that's where this extra money is going towards, I'm absolutely not in favor of this. I think the way that the trees were cut down in the previous years down there was an absolute disgrace, regardless of who paid for it or how it went down. The way that they were cut down and the trees that were selected were not always pine beetle killed trees. There were some green trees that were fallen as well. Some areas were opened up to allow light onto the tee boxes. I don't like the way they fell the trees and left the branches and the logs and everything in the woods. In previous years, this was done by, the men's night group used to go down in spring and have a spring cleanup down at the golf course, that cost our taxpayers nothing. So for us to go and focus on trees from, for an initial $34,000, totally not in favor of this. I do not want to see this at all. Think this is the wrong way for us to go. I think the increase we had originally talked about is we didn't think that you could buy a, what's the name of it? Gator? A gator for $8,000 within the budget, but it, it appears in this that you still can get a gator for $8,000. And I, I would say that we should stick to the original recommendation of the $15,000 at some point, hopefully, or $16,000, and this gets voted down. You know, the $2,000 to do the small bit of cleanup of any danger trees made sense to me. $1,000 to do some, two loads of crushed gravel to fix some cart paths made sense to me. $5,000 to throw some sand and some sand traps made sense to me, and $8,000 to do the John Deere replacement made sense to me. But to increase that to $34,000, to cut trees down? I don't think so.
My, and my understanding, just reading something, it was on page 76, talks about what, what the approximate amount for 2,000 loud measures contained in the rest trees that are, that are becoming immediate concern during 2019 golf season, ready to bond, or should council wish to see this project, project cutting down approximately 13,833 trees, trees commence, be commenced, budget would need to be increased to approximately $15,000?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think that's the thoughts of, of staff, from my understa, maybe I read it wrong, Counselor Howe, but, I mean, this was a, and maybe I read it wrong, maybe I asked Mr. Wall in a minute, but, you know, this, this direction, the increase to the, to the golf course budget, was, it actually came from this council during the budget process, and it was, we had a fairly in-depth conversation when we were worried about the cost, and I mean, I think they, you say how it's $8,000, but, you know, once it gets bought, is it actually still that? I mean, that's what they're quoting as, some of the trees that were cut down and left there, cleaned up and stuff, I mean, I think that was what the whole conversation around the council chamber was, so, I could be wrong, but, Counselor Knobier?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start by saying that I think that the original 13,000, 16,000 is, is reasonable, they're only focusing on, on the, the trees that are posing a risk to the golfers, and, you know, to, to back, we have to say, like, it sounded to me like, you know, that was, Counselor Howe, that was your intention, that you wanted to clean up these, all these dangerous trees in the woods, and, you know, if that's what we need to do, it costs money to do it. I mean, it's nice to say, well, let's get a bunch of volunteers, let's, you know, let's get some guys out there, but, you know, volunteers are hard to come by. If we want something done, we gotta pay for it, and, yeah, I mean, but back to the point at hand, I think 16,000 is, is reasonable, because that's gonna handle the, the immediate changes that need to happen, and we can beautify our golf course.
Any more discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. 1,300, almost 1,400 trees they want to cut down? And then another $10,000 to remove it? I'd rather have them cut a few trees and get them out, because that's part of the problem, is there's so many, there's a lot of dead fall that needs to be cleaned up, and we're worried about fire protection, and I know it's down in the golf course, but I think getting rid of the dead fall and the ones that are down is more of a concern than cutting down 1,400 trees.
Well, again, I think, so what, I read the hazardous trees things, and staff is actually concerned about the same thing, and that's, and that's where you get, right below that hazardous tree comments, you get number one and number two comments coming from staff in the report, because they're concerned about the same thing, right? And he actually says that in the report, so. Mr. Wall, let me ask, is this $50,000, is it to remove, or to help remove 1,383 trees? Maybe I'm reading them wrong?
No, that, that's correct. So we had a hazardous tree assessment done, and they, they recommended that 1,300, almost 1,400 trees need to come down, come down, be, don't believe that that should be done immediately, but what this would do, again, would be to remove more trees than the 2,000 would allow us to do, but also to remove the, the, remove in a way that council, I think, has talked about wanting to done, where the trees actually come out, some of the bushes actually removed, and then some more is done on the sand traps, some more work than simply just putting some sand on top of it. So this would not be to remove all of those trees, that, that would entail all of that budget just simply going towards tree removal. This would be more trees removed than what we had planned, and more brush cleared, and then the trees actually cut up and hauled out rather than just left on the, on the course. Council, what I would say to you, and then this is kind of what administration has to, to do, is how much money do you want to spend to define your golf course this year on tree removal and sand traps? If it's, if you're comfortable with the 16,000, that's good. If you think that's not going to cover it, which I think was your original discussion, you don't have to go to 50, go to 35 and see how much, you know, see what that does to the course, or, or see what 16,000 does to the course, or 50, whatever number you're comfortable with, but we're not going to be going through and removing the 1,300 or 1,400 trees from the golf course.
That was my understanding, and I don't disagree, I remember the conversation during budget, and there was lots of talk, and, I mean, I think everybody had their sense in there, and, so, I mean, I guess if council doesn't want to increase it to the $50,000 so that staff, other direction from us, or the input in our discussion that came back with this, then we can turn it down, and if we're happy with 16,000, is there another motion that need to be made, or that just stays in there, Mr. Wall?
If this is defeated, the budget will remain at 16,000, if that's been approved.
Counselor Howe?
Yeah, so, so what, just to clarify, I was looking for clarity on if we could buy a gator and do all this stuff for $16,000, which I didn't think it was possible. I thought the gator was $18,000 alone. That's why I thought we should increase the budget. I did not want to increase the budget so we could cut more trees down, but I said that the trees that we are cutting down, for danger trees, if they cut them down, they should be bucking them up and cleaning them and pulling them out of the woods. I don't want to see them go in, I don't want to see them have any more money to go in and make it any worse than what it is already. That is what my concern is, is that they go in with this $34,000 budget, or $15,000, whatever they go in with, and they just absolutely decimate the trees. Once they're down, they're down, there's nothing you can do about it. And, and that's my concern with it, is that I'm, if they're only doing $2,000 worth of the work, and they're cutting some trees down that are, are real danger trees, they're cutting them up and getting rid of them, you know, I can, I can live with that, but I can't live with, you know, seeing what the work that was done previously, that was directed by staff, that, how that came out of it, I was not happy with the way the golf course looked, and the majority of golfers that I have talked to down there were also not happy. You know, these woods are hard enough to play out of when you get in there, when the, when the trees are all knocked down all over the place, and it was a safety concern, in my mind, the stuff that was on the ground. People were tripping over and cutting their legs up, banging their knees up, you know, some of the access trails that the carts were able to use were now blocked off because they'd knocked trees across of them, like, so, to me, after, the proof is in the pudding. I've seen what happened down there, and I don't want to see it again. So I'm not interested in giving them any more money to try it again.
My, my thoughts are, I mean, I mean, I can't, I'm on staff, but my understanding of the reason, reason trees were dropped into, into the tree line, right? The best way they could to try to keep that look? So my thoughts here, if we want to see some of that stuff cleaned up, yeah, I'm not saying that to keep it, or move it up to $50,000, but, you know, if we want to say, geez, and we'd like to see what, you know, well, how much does $10,000 clean up the woods? Get rid of some of the stuff we've cut down last year, and then what we cut down this year, get it removed too, right? That, I think that's what staff's saying, so, you know, if, if we're not happy, and you've heard from people at golf, or even the residents that use the golf course for cross-country skiing, and snow shitting, are concerned about what, what tree line or the course looks like itself, this might be a way of adding a bit of money, or leave it, add a bit of money, with the direction that, that, that extra $10,000 is for cleanup, cleanup of what happened from last year.
Fallen trees.
Yeah, and fallen, whatever has to be fallen this year, and, or leave it as it is, let them do what they have to do here in regards to safety. Now, same aspect, and my, and my thoughts as, as a counselor is, if they only have $4,000 or $3,000 left for tree removal, and it's not enough to get rid of the hazard trees plus remove it, they're gonna drop them back in the bush, because they have to get rid of, to me, they have to get rid of the hazard first, and I don't disagree leaving a hazard in the bush is just as good, but it's less than it hanging above you and coming down and talking about us, so, Counselor Knobier?
Yeah, you know, some, some good points, and, you know, after, after hearing the discussion, and it sounds like the, the budget that was provided last time just wasn't adequate, so that these leftover logs were left there due to budgetary issues. Now, if we're hearing from our residents that these changes weren't sufficient enough, then we need to provide the, provide the proper budget so that they can have a properly groomed golf course, and if, you know, I'm, I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards the, the $50,000 now, if that's what it takes to get this cleaned up. I mean, Counselor Howe, you said it, people are complaining that these things, that it's a, a danger to them out there, I mean, I'm not a golfer, but if this is what people are saying, if they're saying that the, the company that went in there wasn't able to pull these trees out because they didn't give enough funding, well, that's on us. We didn't provide enough funding. That's, that's not up to them. I mean, we need to give them enough money to get the job done, rather than, than just do it half, halfway and leave it, and the people that really suffer are the golfers. They're the ones that are banging their knees, they can't, they can't play out of the bush. So, you know, I, I don't like to be a flip-flopper, but in this one, I think I see the merit, and we should allow for the full project to be completed, and if it comes under, perfect, but at the end of the day, it's maintaining a golf course and having a, having it safe down there.
Counselor Howe?
I, I agree, if we can fix the wording on the motion. So my concern, again, is that we provide an additional $15,000, or whatever this is in here, to do tree cutting, that they go in and they cut $15,000 worth of trees down, it's, it's, that's the, the concern that I have. If they're going in with the intention to clean up $15,000 of trees that are already on the ground, different story. I'm, I'm okay with that, but I'm not okay with them cutting $15,000 down, and then us having $18,000 or $30,000 worth of trees we need to clean up next year, right? Cut them, clean them.
So I mean, I actually think it's in there, and I mean, I guess you can read it different ways, but tree removal and beautification, so to me, that, that part is the, the cutting down and the beautification part is removing what we have to cut down for hazard trees this year, plus what we cut down as hazard tree last year, taking that out, getting rid of that, to me, is the beautification part? If I, maybe Mr. Wall, not to put words, but is that clear? Thank you. Any more discussion?
Counselor Lehman?
I'm, I'm not opposed to increasing the budget, but I think we should, like Counselor Howe said, what they cut down, clean it up, clean up what's there, and then worry about cutting more trees later, but I'd like the trees that are gonna be cut, and the ones that are down, cleaned up, and get that in this year's budget, and whatever we, whatever amount we set, but, I mean, what's the point of cutting more trees and then just leaving them down? So, but if we're gonna clean up the ones that they're cutting down this year, they might as well clean up the ones that are already down too.
Yeah, well, my understanding, if we go with the 16,000, to me, if we stay at the $16,000 in regards to what staff come, and then we had the big discussion about trying to increase it, because there was, was those concerns about the trees being cut and left, if we keep it at $16,000, I would, I would, you know, depends how many hazard trees are down there, I think we could see the same thing. I'll actually be supporting the motion that's on the floor, and I believe the reason I'll support is because it came back after sending it to staff, because this is the wants we wanted. Sand bunkers, more sand bunkers, better sand, but we want cart pass fixed, we wanted the trees that were chopped down last year, cut up and removed. Obviously, one hazard trees removed, so nobody gets hurt in the golf course this year. That's all I have to say. Counselor Knobier?
Yeah, and I think to address the concerns of Counselor Howe and Lehman, at the bottom of page 76, leading into 77, the, the tree cutting is gonna be 15,000, and then it's stipulated that there would be $10,000 to get those trees out of there. So, yeah, and that's, that's the key. I mean, if people are complaining that they shut, cut them down, they left them there, well, this, it stays right here, that they have to take it out, and it costs money, it just costs money, so, but yeah.
Is there any more new information in regards to discussion? Okay, call question, all in favor? Closed. Carry.
8.4, pre-approval of Vector Truck and Steam Room repairs. A report from the Deputy Corporal Office dated March 18th, 2019, seeking pre-approval of a Vector Truck and Steam Room repairs.
Repetition? Counselor Maginski?
The council approve, no, sorry, that a council approve, pre-approves funds in the 2019 budget in the amount of $50,000 for the purchase of a Vector Truck.
$500,000?
Sorry, 500, I'll review that. The council pre-approves funds in the 2019 budget in the amount of $500,000 for the purchase of a Vector Truck.
Secondary? Counselor Knobier? Discussion? Counselor Howe?
Is that the same Vector Truck that we use to clean out the outhouses out at the airport?
Just to all, I'm, I'm gonna say yes, but, just to all? Yes.
It's only $500,000, huh? Okay, just checking.
More discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carry. There's another recommendation, another 8.4. Counselor Knobier?
That council pre-approved funds for the 2019 budget in the amount of $15,000 for steam room repairs.
Secondary? Counselor Lehman? Discussion? All in favor? Carry. Scheduling meetings, 8.5. Does anybody, any council have any? Okay, you notice the motion, help these task force, Counselor Howe?
Sorry, I don't have that available.
There you go.
So, that an amount of 15,000 be added to the budget to provide funds for healthcare professional site visits, that includes flights and accommodations to a maximum of $2,500 a person, and that the funds be dispersed at the discretion of the CAO upon the advice of Peter Martin from Northern Health.
Secondary?
Thanks.
Counselor Knobier? Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carry. Counselor's business? Counselor Business, I think the, any council have any? Counselor Knobier?
Yeah, I'll speak to a couple of committees I'm a part of. So the South Peace Health Services Society, we met again, we did some revisions to the proposed changes to the Volteries House moving forward. Um, it's, it's looking, it's looking really positive, they're aiming for a December twenty nineteen open date. We had to change the construction of the, the carriage house, like the secondary property, because of, um. Zoning issues, but, you know, we're looking like it's still moving forward, we're moving into the, uh. Uh, fundraising phase, which I've been volunteered to be on the committee. Um, we, we also had our final, um, success by six meeting. Which, which will be, uh, amount, turning into our Tumblroot Society for Children's Needs Committee, and we're moving forward in our spring. Family event being, uh, taking place late April, early May, I have it written down, but, uh. Yeah, so we're, we're in a planning phase of that, and, and, uh, looking forward to continuing that committee.
Anything else for counsel? Question, answer period. For the press?
Yeah, is the vector truck only gonna be used to clean out the bathrooms at the airport?
No. Do I have all the perks used for the district? Anything else?
Uh, yeah, just a question on the, uh. The map that showed up, uh, this morning, that, uh, the district, uh, did a press release on. Um, reading that press release, I understand council as a whole can't comment on. On the T L E, but I was wondering if any counselors are able to speak on that, of their own accord?
Uh, no, I would take, that's why we did our press release, um, and one, one regards to it is, is what's why we have a contact for. Requested through media is to Mr. Wall. At this point, we have, we have no communication to, to start.
Okay, and the question, second question I have was, uh, have any other T L Es from any of the other personations been, uh, on the table yet?
Not that I, not that I'm aware. Counsel Maginski?
Um, I believe so, um, just don't know if they are public knowledge as of yet.
Counsel How?
So what, what are we allowed to talk about, about this? Like, what's, do we have any?
We have nothing right now, um, I mean, I, I'm gonna try this lightly, but right now, we, we did a, a press release for a reason. And I think that's until, until we can, can, uh, meet as council and, and get direction, I think it's, it's gonna stand. I mean, I can ask Mr. Wall, but, cause I could be wrong, Counsel How?
I would agree, I think this is something that council needs to meet in close and decide what's. Decide what you're going to release to the public.
So, does that mean, like, I can't as a citizen approach counselors individually and ask their opinions on it, or?
Uh, my understanding, and I'll go back to zero, but anything that we've talked in closing, that's why I'm not commenting right now. Uh, Mr. Cross is, is right now, is we don't have any information, right, so commented to council, I guess, um.
No, and, and, sorry, that, that's why I ask, I realize you can't as a council, you don't have the information, but as individuals, it's just an opinion, I feel like. And the reason I ask that is, uh, I've been on that committee for the past three years, uh. I was asked by M L A Burney and M L A Pym to be on that committee, so I've been aware of this for like three years, and, uh. As a committee, we, we have, we're not sworn in secrecy, so I was just curious, so I'll do, what I was asking.
Okay, again, it, a lot of stuff, if there's negotiations and stuff like that, it's usually done. Yeah, is there any more questions? There's no resolution to close the meeting. Counsel Knobert?
Um, as presented.